Good evening. Welcome to the June 10th Council Work Session. And we have three items on the agenda this evening. And we're going to be starting with Mobility Master Plan update.
Thank you, Council President Martz. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. So my name is Stephen Bedua. I'm the Senior Transportation Planner with Public Works Engineering. And tonight, I'm going to give you a brief overview of where we're at with the development of the Mobility Master Plan. Tonight, I'd like to ask for feedback from council members, as long as there's time, on next steps of the process, but also on the guiding principles that have been in development. Just a quick reminder, the Mobility Master Plan is the city's guiding document for future investments in Issaquah's transportation system. The overall idea with the Mobility Master Plan is it'll bring together all of the great work that the city's been doing to have one consistent vision for staff to work with, but for the community to also understand. For the last several months, since the last time we spoke, staff has been meeting with the Transportation Advisory Board and our consultant team to bring up major concepts and ideas of how to form up and build the foundation for the Mobility Master Plan. And really, it's going to be coming together in this next phase where we're talking about policies, programs, and projects. In addition to building that foundation, and because this is the city's first experience with putting together a master plan specific for transportation, we wanted to learn from some of our east side neighbors. And so, we set up staff meetings with Kirkland, Bellevue, and Redmond to learn from their experience and lessons learned from putting together their planning documents. And what we really took away from that experience was that this master plan is really a great step to take, but it's not going to be our last step. We're really going to have to dig into further planning efforts and to really get what we want out of our system. And over the last month and a half, the project team is going through community engagement to have a broad view of what the community is wanting, but also to get into a focus group discussion, level of detail, on why that is for certain reasons of why there's issues for specific groups in the city. And the way we're going to be using that feedback is to really feed into the development of the guiding principles, to revise them in a certain way, specific to how the community is wanting to form the transportation system, but also to rank them to give us more feedback as we're going into discussions on project selection criteria. We'll also be using the feedback from previous planning efforts. Like I said before, this isn't the first time the city has discussed planning for transportation, so we want to use the community feedback for the last several years. We also using the feedback from the community to look at how to form those policies, projects, and programs in the next phase. So when we looked at everything together, from the survey feedback to all the previous efforts, this is how the guiding principles laid out. Not surprisingly, based on discussions with community members, the top issue or top guiding principle we want to do is improve mobility within Issaquah. And what's interesting is the bottom three issues were discussed throughout the different planning processes, but they weren't identified as high priority, at least not as much as the top three. And then, when we had discussions on major issues, these are the top four issues that always came up in each of the processes and efforts that we took before. When we had kind of that broader stroke of looking at the survey data, item number one and item number three were actually the top issues. There weren't enough travel options, and transit just wasn't enough. But when we went a little bit deeper in the focus group discussions, item number two and item number four were actually the top issues that were always brought up. People felt like there were a lot of options out there, they just didn't work with where they lived and where they worked. And then, generally speaking, people just weren't comfortable walking or biking anywhere in the city, and that was in their neighborhoods or in the central area. And so, they felt that city needed to do more. The bottom two items were items that we consistently saw mentioned throughout all the different planning efforts, but weren't really identified as high priority items compared to the top four. And where we are at today, we are transitioning from the development of the guiding principles, moving on to the next phase, which is developing the policies, programs, and projects. Our next touch with council will be about September after we're done with this next phase, and we'll be meeting with a joint session with the Transportation Advisory Board to discuss funding and priority criteria. That was my brief here for you. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I was struck by the comments about the people feeling unsafe, and so I wondered if you could give some more insights into that, and if it's, and how it's related to the other items, because it seems it might be related.
Sure. When we asked in the focus group discussions, we went a little more specific on mode choice, and asking why people chose certain modes or didn't choose certain modes. And when we talked about walkability for certain areas, everyone always had the same answer. It was, they know there's a sidewalk there, they know they can walk there, but they always felt more comfortable driving their car that extra couple blocks versus walking. And when we asked them why, there was no common answer. It was either there was high-volume traffic, or they didn't feel safe crossing the street, or they just didn't feel like they were comfortable walking next to high-speed cars, even in their own neighborhoods. And so, there wasn't a consistent answer, and we'll take a little deeper dive on the type of policies that we can try to employ with the plans implementation. But that was kind of the feedback that we got from the focus group discussions.
Also Deputy President Bateese.
Thanks for the presentation this evening.
Yes.
I was just looking, so you had talked about next touch coming back. It looks for like for both the TAB and a council work session, but then we also have public outreach at that time. Could you just talk about the schedule there?
Sure.
Is that something where TAB and council will have the work session first, and then the public outreach, or vice versa?
We'll actually be starting the public outreach in the middle, and then have the backup. The joint session with the TAB and the council will probably be in the middle of the public outreach. And the reason for that is we want to get a little feedback from the larger stakeholder groups in Issaquah, to gain a little feedback on, are we going in the right direction from what we heard before? And then, talk to council about, are we going in the right direction? And this is also what we heard from the bigger stakeholder groups.
Okay, so there will be some of that information available?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thanks, Stephen. You said that our conversation with TAB is going to center around funding options? So is that separate from our council discussion about the TBD?
Yes.
Okay, so that's looking at some of these larger conceptual projects?
Yes.
Okay.
It should be informed from the other conversation about the TBD, but yes, it is, will be separate.
Thanks.
Any other, councilmember Hunt?
On the survey, I think that it has a question about which neighborhood, and I wondered if there are certain issues that are more specific to certain neighborhoods, or if you looked at it at that level.
There were, but there wasn't enough feedback. Like, the highest number of feedback we got from a specific neighborhood was from Highlands, which was a couple hundred people. But when we looked at the other neighborhoods specifically, it just wasn't as high. And so, we didn't, we weren't comfortable making an assessment of, it was, people felt less walkable in Sycamore, or more walkable in Highlands, because we just didn't have enough to compare.
Other questions? Would any members, anything else?
No, that's it.
Would any members of the public wish to speak to us about this issue tonight before we move on? Nope, all right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate the update. All right, now, we are going to move to ID 0462, City Hall Facilities Long Range Planning. This is going to be presented by Jeff Watling, Tom Beckwith, and Rex Bond, latter two are consultants. And City Administrator Moon, are you going to tee up?
Yes, please.
This, sort of this and the next one, I think.
I am, I am. So, we are happy to have these two next items on the agenda together. We're going to first provide a little bit more information to date since the last conversation we had on City Hall facilities in September, and then utilize some of that information to inform part of our conversation about the proposed CIP. So, I wanted to underscore that this is on the City Hall's conversation and long-range planning on those type of general government facilities. This is just the next step in our conversation. No decision is being asked for tonight, nor during the next conversation on CIP, the immediately adjacent agenda item. But we are very interested in providing you with some information that you requested in September, and continuing this conversation about the future of the facilities and delivery of services to our community. So, the proposed CIP shows both near-term facility maintenance needs, but not expansion, and no renovation projects, and it also shows the possibility of a future consolidated City Hall. We showed both in part because we haven't made a decision, and we need to play out these scenarios, and we need to gather more information. In particular, we have not yet begun a conversation, a focused conversation on this issue with the community. However, by the time we wrap up in July, council has adopted the CIP, we will be asking council for some directional guidance. And staff will seek to understand council's preferences for what the next steps should be on our City Hall conversation. That could look like us posing the question of, shall we begin a conversation with community regarding how our current facilities are or are not working for them, and what they might desire in the future? Or, shall we assume we need to fix, renovate, and expand our existing facilities? That's sort of the basic binary question that we will be looking for with adoption of the CIP. Not necessarily, shall we build a new City Hall? As is the case with most large-scale capital projects, no decision is finalized until we approve and execute that construction contract, really. So, there are multiple steps along the way to this decision-making and to making whatever outcome you choose a reality. In between, there'll be a lot more conversation, more public engagement as well. So, tonight, this team is going to talk to you about City Hall planning, and then we're going to talk about CIP. I wanted to just reiterate what our timeline is for CIP deliberations as well. We're anticipating giving a broad overview of the proposed CIP tonight, and then on June 24th, engaging in more question-and-answer period, more detail on specific projects, following up on tonight's overview presentation. And then, on July 1st, there will be a public hearing on the capital improvement plan, and then, as we anticipate at this point in time, action on the CIP on July 15th. So, with that, I will turn it over to our team, Tom Beckwith, and Rex Bond, and Jeff Watling, to give you some additional information on City Halls.
Great. Does anybody have any questions about the process from this administrator before we move on? All right, thank you for that overview. Director Watling.
All right, good evening, everyone. Real quickly, thank you, Emily, for that introduction, very well said. In many ways, we are at a point with the occupancy of our three City Halls that we really need to start taking this long-range view. Where do we want to see ourselves in 20 years? We had a chance to take some tours. Thank you so much for joining us on those. I think what we know and understand, what the facilities team keenly understands, is we are really at the front end of some pretty significant reinvestment that we are going to need to make into these three buildings, should we choose to stay in them. And so, that really, as Emily said, we're not trying to create a forced decision tonight. We really want to start taking that strategic long view to help inform these near-term decisions as we move forward. With that, some of the takeaways we took from the tour, through conversations we had, and really identifying some of the key functionality issues we have within our three buildings, we are occupying three buildings, two in particular, this very building in City Hall Northwest, that were not intended, they weren't designed as City Halls. I think as one of the takeaways from those tours that we certainly heard from you, and certainly recognize as we've lived in them, is there's only so much we can do to make them functional. So, that's created some customer service challenges, that we have some very hard-working staff that do a lot of creative workarounds, but they're still very real. We have some safety, security concerns when we talk about the flow of staff and public and vulnerable customers who might need some privacy, and how are we able to give that? We have some real accessibility concerns with some of our buildings that are very real. And overall, this is really, I think we're living in some workplace functionality issues that, again, workarounds happen, we've lived in these. I think what we're identified as temporary spaces for a number of decades now, but we're really at a critical point to start looking long-range at how we want to position our facilities to best serve our customers, the residents of Issaquah. We've identified tonight, and you'll see in the staff report, two really broad options that I'm going to hand it over to Tom Beckwith and Rex Bond to sort of start diving into. These two options, one is this concept of, let's stay in place. What would it look like to plan for, invest in, grow in our three buildings? So, that's the stay-in-place option you're going to hear. And then, the other is, what would it look like to consolidate into one City Hall? So, we've got some funding details we want to start looking at, what it would look like costing-wise, what are some of the funding options? How might we finance either of these options, and what the cost would be? And then, really open it up for conversation with you. So, Tom, Rex.
First slide.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on.
Let me do my job.
Most of the beginning here was in the original study, the original needs assessment, so it's in detail. So, I'm just going to summarize those, so we can get to some of the implications about how each of these options could be delivered. So, if it's stay in place, the blue is what it will cost for City Hall South improvements, red would be what City Hall Northwest would require, and green is what City Hall employees would require. That's just improvements to get them through 20-year. This is not to expand for additional staff, it's just to maintain those facilities, what we call lifecycle. And that was based on detailed analysis done by Rex's mechanical electrical engineers, went through everything in the buildings, rated them, listed them, costed them. Costs that are shown are, I think, present-day costs?
Present-day dollars.
Present-day dollars. Next. This would account for future expansion needs. Now, we projected with each department director, sat down with them, and asked them to forecast what will be required at 37,000 population in the city, which is approximately, I think you're even above that a little bit, then for 41,500, and then for 45,000. 45,000 is what's in your current comp line for your 20-year growth projection number. So, what we're doing here is we're accounting for improvements to all three facilities, but then, we're looking at expanding buildings. We haven't said which one, or don't know which one at this point, to accommodate future growth. And at some point in time, since we presume that one of those sites would be on a restricted site, we would need parking deck for whatever the additional growth in parking requirements would be. And last, we did compute what's the meeting commuting costs are for staff driving between three buildings. We did a survey of all the departments. They identified how many people, how long it took, how many trips they did per year. And what we did here was we simply took the same number of trips and grew them for 20 years, and the only thing we did was inflate the salary values by 2.7% per year, to get some idea over 20 years what that cost could imply. Next. Option two, consolidated City Hall, then we're presuming that we're starting brand-new, we're building a new facility. We do have some renovation of City Hall and police, presuming that City Hall moves out and the police begin to take over the rest of the building, as was projected when it was designed. This would be what would be the cost for building a consolidated City Hall, and this is what it would cost in green to be, to build a parking deck to accommodate it, presuming that we're in an urban site or we're a constraint site, we're not doing surface parking solutions. Next. Now, we also calculated the net cost, because one of your net costs would presume you would sell the surplus facilities you don't need. That might be Northwest, and it might be this site. We took pretty much appraised values of kind of a rough market opinion from Community Development Department and said, all right, if we subtract that, then it drops this number down to 36 million from 38 million. That's a presumption, as to what the values would be and where City Hall would be located. Now, the one thing in the consolidated City Hall is we presumed you would be using city land somewhere. We did not crank in the cost of acquiring anything. And that's true also on option one, is stay in place. Presumably, some expansion would have to occur, and the question would be, if you can't do that on any of your three sites, then you would have to acquire something for that, too. We did not calculate at this point in the analysis what that cost would be or where it would be located. Next. This is the differences between option one and option two at 37,000, 41,500, and 45,000. Initially, option one is cheaper. We're primarily just renovating what we have, and at some point in time, then we have to begin to expand it. So, the difference is almost, as I say, a million dollars, two is more expensive than one. By the time you get to 41,500, it's still about a million dollars, but by the time you get to 45,000, then you're about 2.2 million, because now we're looking at a new facility to meet all your needs, as opposed to continue to incrementally expand. And this chart down at the bottom just shows that basic net loss, loss, gain.
I'm sorry, councilmember Goodman, you have a question?
Just a quick question. Do any of these take into account any sale of city property?
Both of them did. Neither one of them costed acquiring any property, so we assume in both cases it would be city land of some kind.
But what about selling?
In option two, we presumed you would sell Northwest and this site. Excellent. These are alternative design delivery options. This is the design-bid-build. This is the conventional approach. Basically, you hire the architect, the architect designs the building, puts together specifications for it, you put it out for a bid, the contractor bids it, and usually, it's the lowest cost a bidder, and you use these kinds of funds on which to pay for it. The issues that happens in the conventional is we tend to over-spec, since we're protecting against the lowest possible bidder. Usually, the architect will pick equipment, pick materials, pick the different construction methods that they know can't go wrong, in case the low bidder is not, say, as experienced as a more expensive bidder. So, they tend to be just a little bit over-sculpted. This is design-build. The difference is you're hiring a design-build developer who has the architect on their team and the contractor on their team. And what you're giving them, instead of the detailed design or the performance characteristics you wanted the building, so instead of saying, I want this particular HVAC system, which this architect may specify to protect you, they would say, these are the performance characteristics that I want from whatever you select. Now, you're free to select it. I said that this could save 10% to 15%, that's very conservative. Generally, it's 15% to 30%. The difference between 15% and 30% is how complicated the construction site is, how much staging there has to be, whether there's any exotic materials that go into it, or such complications. The key differences between these costs and that cost is you're using performance specs, then you can be a little bit more efficient on what you pick and what it costs. And the other issue is faster. You're designing a building at the same time, these usually take 1/3 to 40% less time, and therefore, less construction financing that the builder and the contractor pass it on to you. One issue with design-build approach, under the current legislation, only cities of over 70,000 can do this by themselves. And cities under 70,000 can't do that, even though there's some debate now that we've had a lot more practice with public agencies doing this, this has been done in the private sector for at least 30 or more years, of dropping that population number. You can still use it, but that wouldn't be you. You would recruit the developer, and the developer would do this, and basically sell the building back to you when they're done. If you've seen anything on build-to-suit at ports, that's what ports do. So, you could get the benefit of the savings of a design-build, but you wouldn't be the primary contracting partner.
Councilmember Hunt.
So, the design-build is expected to save money and to go faster, and so I'm wondering what the reasons are for going with design-bid-builds, because I see that a number of cities are going that way in the table that comes later. So, what are the benefits of doing design-bid-build rather than design?
It's not only more efficient, let's say, in your selection of materials and equipment, because you're working against performance specs rather than being given materials and so on that you have to go out and acquire. It's also faster in the time, as I said. But the other issue, what usually happens up here, and by the way, the very first design-bid were state projects, and the reason that the state legislature finally authorized the state to go ahead and use design-build in the two buildings we did for them, the natural resource building and LNI, was sometimes this process can get stuck. Many fingers in it, it gets to be redesigned, tends to have a bit of a creep, and the creep costs time and money, and pretty soon, you're kind of out of scope. So, one of the arguments that the director of the general administration made the legislature is if you allow me to do the performance specs, and you allow me to do the design-build, I can have the natural resource building done in two years, versus it's been 10 years that we keep designing and redesigning and going through that process. Also, this is not the lowest bidder. You do, under design-build, fix the maximum cost, and the builder and the developers have to deliver the building within that maximum cost. But here, you're dealing with the lowest bid, and not always are you going to, even though you build all these safeguards in it, you're not always going to get the best product with the lowest bidder.
Thank you. So, I think, so I'm going to try to rephrase the question, because it sounds like there's a lot of benefits of design-builds, those things that you all, that you mentioned, all of them, I think, are benefits of design-builds. And I'm wondering, what are the benefits of design-bid-builds? The conventional approach? Because I see that a number of cities are using that.
Yeah. In the traditional design-bid-build approach, a client, you, get the ultimate say in everything that goes into your building, down to the spec on this particular microphone. In a design-build scenario, I'll tell them that this is what we're looking at for the type of microphone, and the developer in the middle there will come back and say, I can get that same product, or 1/3 the price, if you're okay with this. And so, there's this process that you go through. I think an interesting example, I'm just wrapping up the Utilities and Transportation Commission new facility under the design-build method, and I went through, and I picked some beautiful light fixtures. They were just really great. And the developer said, here's an alternative package from the electrical design team that I work with usually, and the cost difference to you, the owner, is going to be like huge. So, are you okay with slipping back a notch from what your architect wanted as some signature lighting? So, that's just an example of sort of how those two different play out. That makes sense?
As a planner versus an architect, the answer is it depends. Because you can go in here, as long as this is fixed, they're going to build a building against the maximum cost you specified, you can go back in here and say, I like the light fixtures that are costing more anyway, and as long as it's understood that that's over and above what they bid on, that's okay.
So, yes, you can throw more money at it to get my light fixture.
I think the only issue is, this is tried and true, everybody knows it, and everybody's used to it. used to it. A lot of the public works departments on all the cities have done conventional from everything from roads to buildings and so on. So they're more tried and true versus this is a relatively new, at least for public agencies. On the other hand, more projects are going this direction because of the cost savings than are going that direction.
So I have a question. So it seems like with the design build, it seems like you would have to write a much tighter specification because otherwise you could have, like if you said, I just want lights, right? Somebody would be like, okay, well, I will get you, you know, 20-year-old fluorescent bulbs, you know, that you can visibly see them, you know, picking. So you specify, you know, you write a light specification, you write an electrical specification. It seems like design build could involve more spec writing and oversight by the city or municipality involved because you have to specify all that. Otherwise, the company you hire is just going to go get the least expensive stuff they can for, given that they bid a fixed price for it.
You have to have good performance specs, so you're doing a little more thinking ahead of time. And you, here, you're also monitoring, you're doing the construction administration, you're still monitoring that they're delivering what performs against that spec. I wouldn't say that your administration oversight is, quote, significantly less here, just different. Can you do that?
Yeah, I think a prime example was in the, taking lighting is another great example. In the council chambers or the hearing room for the Utilities and Transportation Commission under this scenario, it was critical that we had a lighting designer on our team because a developer doesn't know how to do lighting specific to a customized space like that. So there were some things that were explicit that we needed to have when it went to an LED light fixture in open offices. You know, if they could get a better shake on a particular brand, then that was acceptable. So.
Difference here is, you may say, is that light what I specified? Here, you're saying, is that light perform what I specified it perform?
Correct. Council Deputy President Bateese?
So with the design build, you had talked about that being newer, a newer approach for smaller cities. So how long has that been, have the smaller cities been utilizing that design build?
Twenty years.
Twenty years. Okay.
Twenty years. But its popularity has increased significantly recently. And in the very beginning, it was the two-state projects I talked about. Now, the universities are doing that, the counties are doing that, numbers of agencies. The differences we'll see a little later is because it's a more, a different product, and you're bringing in people potentially to help you do it because it's not something that maybe your staff has had a lot of experience with, smaller cities don't generally jump into it unless the project get above around 20 million or more.
Councilmember Walsh?
So I believe you said that cities under 70,000 couldn't use this without a partnership?
Correct. The legislature doesn't, if you're going to do design build, there is a board at the state that oversees and takes a look at how you're going to put it together, who's involved, what their technical skills are, what kind of project it is, and they certify that you can move ahead if you're over 70,000. If you're a county, it's over 400,000. If you're under that, then what you're going to do is you're going to recruit that party and they'll do the design build, and basically you buy the facility from them afterwards.
So how would that work if we were working on city land?
You can do either way. Some have rolled the city, and we're going to get to that in the lease to own, but sometimes you can roll the purchase of the land and everything into one package. Sometimes cities like to buy the land and then roll the building into the.
So are you saying we would have to technically sell the city land to the design bid developer? Have them build it?
I'm saying you have the option of going either way. If you've looked at any port, it's called Build to Suit. The port will say, we'll build a facility for you. You tell us what your industrial requirements are, and basically they go out and recruit somebody like this to build the structure, but the port still owns the land. So there's one option where you can retain the land, and another option where you can turn around and say, I want all folded in here. I may pick the site, but I want you to roll the financing of the site into the total package.
Okay.
Should we look at the other options, Tom?
Now, these are leased to own. The difference is this is a private approach and this is a nonprofit approach. The difference is here, you're seeing you're doing a little bit more than just the design build, although both of these depend on the design build, but you're also having them finance it. So in this case, the private developer goes a little bit further and they pull in the private money to pay for it. And so you're buying the package back from them under a lease to own. The terms here, when I said you could use design build without being the party that does it, is you can set this for purchase on the day that the building is done, or typically this may be a 20- or 30-year basic mortgage buyback where you buy the facility during that period of time. The difference here is you're, whatever savings you got on the design build, you're going to give some back to the private developer because they're going to want a profit and they're using private money. So arbitrarily, I said, if you save 15% of design build, then maybe you're going to give back 5% to 10% to the private developer for their money and their profit. If you use 6320, 6320 is just an IRS ruling that allows a nonprofit to own and rent facilities to other parties. And it's just called 6320 because that's provision in the IRS code. So in this case, a nonprofit is created, they do the very same process, but they can take and sell your, that financing package on tax-exempt bonds. So they're paying the same rate that you would pay if you issued a municipal bond. So basically, you're going to keep whatever that, 10% to 15%, or as I've said, could be up to 30% savings using them. When you put these two together, they're competitive. You're having them compete not only on the specifications for the building but on the financing terms as well. So, and in your financing terms, you can specify how many number of years or whether you want balloon payments or you want graduated payments or whatever it is that you want in your financial particulars. At any point in time, you can also decide to cash it out. These can be funded with your general funds normally, as we do. They can also be funded with bonds, although generally what we've been doing are resetting the levy-lid lifts. Levy-lid lifts for the duration of the project, whichever that might be, 20 or 30 years, and then you sunset back to what the rate was before. It's about the same cost as a bond, but it only requires 50% approval of whoever votes versus a bond is 60% of a 40% turnout. And like the levy, you can take the levy and capitalize it at some point in time and buy it out, or you can let it run and you pay annually to retire. Next. This is just the definition of the 6320 to give you where it came from. I'm taking this from MSRC. It's from one of their detailed source definitions. And as I've said, we've used this in a lot of different projects. I provided staff a copy for the National Development Council. They're based here in Seattle. They've done maybe 30 projects for you, including the next slide.
Yep.
They did your Highland water line expansion. That was 6320, and you were basically the client for that too. These are the alternative design delivery methods, and the only thing I've shown here is a source of funds. This is conventional, design build, lease to own, lease to own. You can use general funds for all four of those. Levy-lid lifts and GO bonds are primarily these two sources because if you're asking the voters to approve a 20-year source of financing generally, then you're going to try to cap out the project and you pay for it. Although, as I've said, you can use a levy lid all the way through here by simply taking whatever the levy produces per year used for your lease payments. And these are some examples from each of those particular methods. These are just, I just limited this to city halls, not all the other types of projects that are being funded this way.
I don't understand what you said about the options in relation to the levy-lid lift and general obligation bond around the LTO, so can you say it again, please?
If you go to GO bond, then basically you're getting a time, getting the money over a years' period of time, but the whole idea is to take the cash by the building and then pay it off basically against the bond. So it's hard to take that to pay for lease to own because that's not the nature of the bond, that's not the agreement behind the bond. Levy-lid lift, which is going to produce the same amount of money per year, doesn't require the same kind of purchase of an asset because it's a GO bond, the asset is your facility. Here, you're taking the money to do lease purchase payments even though you're buying the building. So it should have put this one down here for the lease to own, not the bond, but it should have allowed the levy-lid lift to do that. Meanwhile, you can use general funds, whichever else you have, or all four if that becomes the case.
Do you happen to know how Redmond, how Redmond is structuring it?
In the beginning, they went to 6320, and I don't know where they came up with their lease payments, though. I don't know the history behind that. But at some recent point in time, and Rex can tell you, they decided to buy out their remaining agreement. Know how they financed that?
I don't have the background on exactly how they came to pay off their 6320.
I don't know where that, I assume that they used this because obviously they didn't use a GO bond, and using levy-lid lifts for specified purposes is relatively recent. Most municipalities have been using the levy-lid list against a sunsetted project, project-only basis for the last five years. So I doubt they did that.
Couldn't they do GO to buy out the lease?
You could.
He knows what they did.
Sure, you could.
Okay. Other questions right now? Nope.
I was just going to point out, after the question of who owns the property, in the Redmond case, I'm pretty sure they owned the property that they had the building built on because it's part of their whole campus.
Correct. And these are some recent city hall projects that are kind of listed down here. The only one I got wrong was this one. This is.
Redmond. But I think, you know, this goes back to Jeff's intro. All of these buildings represent, whether you choose option one, stay in place, option two, build a new facility, whatever you're going to be looking at, you're going to be looking at things like customer service, which is top-left up here at Kirkland, the renovation that we did for them to pull the public into a central atrium. There is staff safety and security, and that goes, that was part of the renovations that we did on Redmond. And Redmond also, I think, represents nicely the idea of civic plazas. There's opportunities, whether you're renovating or doing new, what you can give back to the public, and that sort of thing.
I would, this one is an example of a trend. The ground floor is retail. This was done with a lease to own for the private developer. Private developer is going to build housing behind that and share a parking deck between this building and the residential units, but they cashed it out. They didn't carry it for the long lease terms. And that's a sign of a new, kind of a mixed-use kind of opportunity. Here in city hall is actually above the library. The library built and owns the building, and the city hall is basically buying condo back their piece of it. And University Place is the same thing. It's not only library but retail on the ground floor and then city hall is on the upper floors. And that, those create different kinds of financing opportunities as well as different economic stimulus.
And Shoreline, middle-right over here, they built out the shell for future growth with the police department, which has just now transitioned so that they are then moving the police back into that building when they weren't there before. Top-right up there is Lakewood, and that was interesting in that in that one, they've got council chambers on one end of the building, and they actually have dedicated courts on the other end of the building. And they originally started with a police, a small police piece there. Police requirements outgrew the space, so they built themselves a new PD, and they backfilled with city hall when they moved out.
There's another interesting fact for this particular building. They were actually renting a building in here where all this staff were housed, and they bought that property. Then we designed the building around it, so they built this while they stayed occupant here. And once this was done, then they dropped the building and put it in their parking lot.
Just to clarify, Tom, the first building you mentioned, the brick one with the retail, it's Pialop.
Right. Okay, next. These were presumed savings between option one and option two using these particular methods. So the savings, if you use the design bid build, the traditional approach was the 2 million, too, as we pointed out before. If you use design build and only do 15% savings, you're saving 7 million. If you use a lease to own, but you're giving back to the private developer some of that, so that's 15, and you're taking 10 away, it's 4 million. If you're using a lease to own with a nonprofit, that's 7.7. But as I said, that's 15%, and that could actually go 15% to 30% depending on how it's done. Last, I think that's the last. Assuming, these are some of the operational factors and criteria to consider. Do you want me to cover that or you want to cover that?
You go. You're on a roll, Tom. That's great.
Some of the questions are, what's the customer resident experience between your options? And not only between which of these choices, but what you, how you design your services and your facilities, whatever it is. The other is staff productivity. We've run some kind of cost analysis and said, if you improve staff productivity by 3%, you'll pay for the building over 20 years. On the other hand, if you impede staff productivity, it'll cost you more than the building over 20. What are your safety and security considerations? You see this as paramount in today's environment. Your ADA accessibility, not only for staff but customers, your energy efficiency goals. Anything built by a nonprofit developer is going to be lead. The reason is they're going to be operating at the time that they, that they own it, so they want a highly efficient building, and this is probably your biggest savings over time. Travel time, to and from meetings of staff and customers. What helps to attract and retain a competitive workforce? If you looked at those examples of city buildings and you put yourself, you know, if you're trying to recruit a new employee, which kind of building do you think they're going to be attracted to want to work and live in? Are there any joint ventures? And what are your place-making opportunities, plaza and or park, such that Rex began to allude to? You're creating a place, not just a building that people work in.
So as we move forward, yeah, I think those are critical, some ideas, certainly not an all-inclusive list of factors and criteria. I'll close and hand this over to Emily. As you see on the bottom, the administration's recommendation, there's a typo there, sorry, recommendation would be to continue to explore and pursue a consolidated city hall in these coming years. And I think this recommendation folds right into the CIP conversation we're going to have and knowing really our next touch. We want to have that conversation, have that deliberation, not out of context but within context of all of our other capital improvement needs and priorities. Given the creative options that are out there, given the funding mechanisms that are in place that public agencies are using more and more, it is feasible to consider what a consolidated city hall would look like and in a number of ways, a smart option for us to pursue as we move forward. Councilmember Walsh?
So one of the questions up there is, what helps to attract and retain a competitive workforce? Are there any data on cities that have built a new building or significantly remodeled that have had more success in retaining or attracting employees?
Only anecdotally. I don't know of anything that, anything on an objective basis trying to measure that. I think the best way of finding out is who were the people you tried to get and couldn't? Where did they go and why, and what were some of their factors?
So I have a question. Can you go back one slide, that slide? Okay. So let's say we get to a point and we say, sure, we like it. So a $31 million, $31,249,139, you pay that, you go to buy that, you're going to pay just broadly something north of $1,006,000 per year, right?
Yeah. Trust your math, but probably.
So is that what we're talking about for, as a city?
Are you assuming 20 years?
Yeah. I was assuming amortizing the.
Well, first off, if you did just a design build here, you're buying it once it's done. If you're using a lease to own, you can structure whatever years or whatever payment schedules you want, but you would still be. you want, but you would still be paying a, you're still paying an amount per year. That's why I think the use of the levy lid lift becomes somewhat attractive for whatever that balance can be. If you did this all by itself, without the lease to own, you had to develop or build it for your turnkey, as it's called, and you took it over, then you'd either need good money in the bank to pay it off, $31 million, or you'd need the GO bond approved, or you'd need the levy lid lift sunset provision approved. You went to these, you would need to figure out how to manage your cash flow, where you would get it.
So is there any scenario where it doesn't cost something north of a $1,005,000 for any of these options per year for the next 20 years?
Well, I don't, I have to qualify, excuse me, I don't know what the $1,005,000, I haven't run the, we haven't got to the point where we're running cash flow. There's nothing, though, that you're going to avoid not having to pay something per year.
No, I get that. I'm just trying to understand the magnitude of what the investment would be for us, what $30 million means for this council right now.
I'd say we'd have to run the numbers. We've not run those numbers yet.
Thank you.
I wouldn't say it's $1,005,000, but then it's still going to be over $1 million, probably.
Okay.
Under, in every scenario there.
Councilmember Walsh?
So considering we're also looking at the TBD, which would go out to voters, how do we feel about the idea of doing a levy lid lift in addition? How do, how do those compete? Because I'm asking Emily more than anything.
Well, I think it's a little early to have that conversation. I think that is definitely one of the things council needs to evaluate, weigh, what this...
Do we feel like we can separate the timelines enough?
Yeah, I think that's entirely possible to look at those options.
So speaking of timelines, what, what are our options here? I know on the CIP, it's out past the five-year timeframe.
Right, right. The construction phase is shown in those future years columns. What we would suggest is, as I started, we continue this conversation throughout CIP adoption. Leave open the options of continuing to explore whether a consolidated city hall might make sense, whether the community feels that that would be a way to make wise choices about our investments and to help deliver city services. Go and have that conversation with the public, learn a little bit more. I think what our team has put together is, these numbers aren't whole rounded numbers, and, and that's, that's a beef I usually take with people that put together budgets because it's way too early. These are built off of formulas, of course, so they generate these numbers, but we don't know the exact cost. And some of that will hinge on what we hear back from the community, where, what kind of input might they have about location? That might help inform us about whether or not we should look at already city-owned land or not. What kind of features would they like to have in the building? Is there interest in sort of mixed-use or public plazas incorporated, parking that might serve more than just this future building? So we'd want to pose all those questions and then direct some cost estimates off of that, and then look at what kind of financing term and delivery option might make sense, and then, and then look at timelines. Our, our near-term issue is going to be whether or not to do some major capital reinvestments, particularly in this building and City Hall Northwest. So it will be advantageous for us to at least decide between those two binary options. Go have public conversation and figure out if there's some interest and need to pursue this, or choose to not do that conversation and instead go forward with directing staff to make the needed investments in our current facilities. And then even in that option, we're going to have to look and see what is feasible. We talked about available land, for example, and construction constraints to do the expansion that ultimately would be needed on those existing buildings. So we'd have to come back with more options on that. But at least if we knew that was the path that council wanted to go down, then we would bring forward with greater confidence the next set of building improvements that need to be made, like replacement of an HVAC system. That's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Other materials to present?
That's it.
Other questions? Councilmember Hunt?
So on the timeline, what's the approximate number of years out if we were to pursue one of these options for a new city hall?
I may ask our team to help inform this answer. In my experience, the community conversation, let's say, will take a year, then your, your pursuit of funding may take even another year, perhaps, depending on what methodology you employ, particularly if you have to refer something to a ballot. And then a design phase can take a year, construction, how many months?
Yeah, it's, it would make a difference on which direction you're going to go. It could be, I would start with a year, and I think it could go to maybe a year, six months, year, eight months, depending on how big of a project you're writing up.
Yeah. So I think if we ran fast, might hit four years. If it takes a little bit longer, it may be, it may be five or more.
Okay. I think I added up to five in, in that, but it could have been four. Okay. And then I think I missed why the lease to own is different cost than, or the lease to own with private developer is different cost. It was on the one you were on. You were on the right one.
Oh.
Yeah. This one. Lease to own for private developer is a, quite a bit higher cost than lease to own with nonprofit developer, and is, is that due to the, the expected difference in the discount?
No, you're assuming that the private developer is using private money, and they're also is taking a profit. A nonprofit developer is using revenue bonds, which are the same cost as a GO bond, and they're not, under the IRS provision, they can't charge a profit.
Okay. And so then what, what does it mean that, so there's a 15% discount, but then this is the plus 10% additional cost? Is that what the indication is?
The cost that the private developer would imply. And that's, those are just ballparks. You've got to be careful that they're still ballparks.
Okay. And then my last question, there's a 20-year time horizon, but there's also the expectation that we have 45,000 population build out. And so I'm wondering, which is the critical factor in what, what these, at what point these costs actually pencil out? So if we, if we had a different population growth rate than what we expect, for example, is that more important, or is it, is it really based on the other costs here that are really time-dependent? So it would be 20 years kind of regardless?
It could affect you in two ways. We don't encourage you to, if you're designing a building, a building, we're saying make them flexible. One of the problems with past city halls that were designed maybe 10, 20 years ago is they became very custom buildings. I'm thinking of Kent City Hall. And it didn't work as they expanded, and things changed with how we worked. We'd say make it flexible. And the second would be build what we call a biblical building, seven years of feast and seven years of famine, so you've got some capacity to anticipate some growth. And you can see in the Shoreline example, they went ahead and built the top floor because it was more cost-effective to do that, even though they weren't quite ready yet to fill it. So whatever you design, the 45,000 is just a ballpark at this point, and we think when you do your compliance, you may even, excuse me, have a higher number, and you want to kind of anticipate that as you get down to that phase.
That is a great question, because I think it also comes into play with the stay-in-place option, and that we're, we, we use 20 years as a, as a rough projection. If for some reason we were to grow sooner than that, I think where it would come into play is the expansion need, right? To which, when does staff growth dictate maybe a quicker expansion of one or two of these buildings, or an expansion into a fourth building? That's, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Emily, but it would...
Councilmember Walsh?
So what kind of lifespan do we build these buildings for?
Generally, 40 to 50-year. And the new, new buildings we're building, particularly the lead buildings, the type of materials are more durable materials, the types of utilities and the types of way we use energy are more durable, are more efficient. The other issue is the way we anticipate the space to be used. So we try to stay away from really highly dedicated and compartmentalized spaces. So you see, they're a lot more flexible, so they can be reprogrammed, reconfigured, altered without having to go into major changes to...
So it sounds like there's a certain amount of time that we would expect the building and the materials to last and all of that, but if we're building to 45,000 population, that would necessitate, you know, if we get to that in 20 years, we would potentially have a building for another 25, which wouldn't fit our needs. How do we manage that?
That would be a decision I think you'd make if you decide, decide to move ahead and build something, is to determine just how big a facility, like Shoreline did, how big a facility. Some cities have backfilled the empty space. They, Kent, for example, was a private developer built a building adjacent to the city hall, and it was backfilled with lawyers for a long period of time, private tenants. And as the city acquired the building, because it was a lease to own from a private developer, they gradually filled that building with their own staff, and then at some point in time, the tenants moved out and it became a total city property. So some of your strategy would be, do we anticipate more growth? And if so, how do we recover the cost of doing that? If that's what you decide to do. And that's a, that's a strategic decision, not just a requirement.
So on that, I think, Jeff, my feedback would be, I would want to see some numbers that look at us at a larger population time, that kind of go more toward that 45-year range, or, you know, even somewhere toward that, because I think this may underrepresent the potential build costs for the lifespan of the building.
I want to plus-one that. If you look at the Seattle Metro over the last eight years, it's grown at average of 1.7%. If you take that out 20 years, what you get is we go from 37,000 to 52,000 at a 20-year marker.
And you, even though we're, we get more and more efficient, you're still employing people. You can't presume that, you know, you're going to be so efficient, you're going to need more people. And we're finding that city halls become more, the communal space to get together to work as teams, to interact with the public and so on, it's not just adding more cubicles. It's how you interact is important.
Yeah, I was just going to piggyback a little bit on that, that if you look at a city hall that was designed 20 years ago, half the people had an office, the other half had 8 by 10 cubicles and eight-foot fuzzy walls, and just the, the change in technology and the change in the way the workplace is has made the space requirements smaller. Not to say that, you know, you can depend on that, but I would speculate that through technology, that the, the drivers are going to help reduce the actual amount of square foot allotted per FTE.
No, I, I get that. I'm in a space, we have four managers in a, it's about a 12 by 12 room, and there's four of us in there. And it's just, you just have a desk and a computer and your stuff.
Your work and stuff?
Yeah, and we, we figure it out. And that's managers. Council Deputy President Batiste.
Jeff, I was, could you just talk a little bit more? I was just looking at the timeline in the memo for where we're at now with Q2, and then going into Q3 and Q4. So when I'm looking at next steps for the six-year CIP, it talks about which long-range path would, we would be pursuing. And so, leading up to that, we would have public engagement and then the inventory assessment, get more information as we're heading into that, adopting that CIP plan. Is that...
Yes, absolutely. So as a next step, certainly what you're going to hear introduced to you tonight through the six-year CIP conversations, we and Emily touched on this a little bit earlier, as we've been working with the communications team, laying out what we're calling sort of a Phase 1 public engagement happening through the summer and into the fall, where we want to really be a mix of informational to the residents and communicating either through video and through white paper and others, sort of this current situation we're in, and really, I think, start with that core conversation with our residents and our customers. What do they value? What, what are their interests? What are their needs for city hall facilities? Both proximity, how they're located, uses, their experience, et cetera. The city facility inventory assessment that you mentioned, myself and the facilities team, Rick Patterson is here, are putting that together, plan to have that done by the fourth quarter. That's taking a look at not the bigger city buildings that are part of this, but the smaller properties. So that will be important work, that that may bring in some of these other properties that we have assembled through the years, particularly here in the Old Town area and along the Rainier Corridor. So we want to bring that work to completion to be able to inform this conversation. If we were to consider consolidation, what are some options, perhaps, on existing city properties? So few moving parts that are, again, we're wanting to bring those all together to help inform this big policy discussion, and really, direction we're, we're seeking at this point.
Other questions? Did you administer it?
I don't have any others.
So I want to thank you, gentlemen. It's always a pleasure and enlightening when I have you in here. I feel like, it's like the municipal version of This Old House with Bob Beal.
Sell it or flip it, or whatever.
Well, those of us who are a little bit older, it's, I think of This Old House. But I will ask if, if, if you're done, Jeff, if any members of the public wish to speak to us on this topic this evening. I see at least one hand. If you want to come to the microphone, and if you want to share your name and relationship to the city, you are welcome to do so. You've got three minutes.
I might need 30 seconds. I had a couple of questions. The first one that came to my mind, oh, Tim Flood, seven-year Iskow resident, potential city council member, was just, have we looked at potential sites if we were to consolidate it, and what those costs might be? The way this was presented tonight, it made option two look awfully good, and there would be a cost savings, and we get a nice new shiny building, which everyone would like, but if we were to buy a piece of land for $6 million in today's dollars, that would be $10 million, that would change the calculus on that math. So I'm just curious if there are any city-owned pieces of land, and if not, have we come up with an estimated cost if we were to buy one? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to make comment?
David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. All is tied to population, but we could not build one extra residential unit in the city in the next five years. We'd have a lot more traffic, a lot more Costco employees, a lot more, you know, non-residential development, so we might need it before we get to a certain population number. I've been in schools where we got completely moved to a different school for the year, and I've been in schools going through remodels and additions, and it's, remodels and additions are really, you know, really screw up everything. Land is definitely a, a big issue. We're competing with Costco for more, for more land, at least in one part of the, or a very significant part of the city. But now Brett has, doesn't he have a bunch of land over by his facility in the RV park that the utility funds own? I don't know. I'm not sure that's where I want us to be, but there is a chunk of land there. But we got to buy off the utility funds, I guess. The other thing is, DNR, Department Natural Resources, not suggesting we build on Tiger Mountain, but they own where Fred Meyer is. That land is, is Department Natural Resources' land. That land is Department of Natural Resources' land. Where Swedish Hospital, it was more of an advanced clinic, was over across the street from near the entrance to the state park. They own that building and that land. So they could end up being our landlord, or work out something that we could be, take an advantage of their possible ways of acquiring land or helping us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to?
Good evening. Cyrus Crone, resident and publisher of Issaquah Daily. I just have two questions. I don't presume you'll be able to address them now, but I thought I'd just get it out there for the record. From thirty-seven to forty-five, and in another scenario, up to fifty-two thousand, is there a formula that's used to determine the rate of staff growth to understand which positions are needed to support the residents in that growth phase? And then secondarily, I was curious, who conducted an audit on the existing buildings and what capital improvements are needed currently? I heard HVAC had a couple hundred thousand dollars, but are there line items that we can see what the total needed projected improvements are over the period to the existing three buildings? Thank you.
Thank you, Cyrus. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Anyone else? Third call? City Administrator, I will hand it back over to you.
Great, thank you. Well, that conversation moves right into our next conversation, so if council is ready, we will proceed. Thank you. We will proceed with the next item, which is ID 0432, the 2020 to 2025 Capital Improvement Plan. And I'm going to invite Beth Goldberg, our Finance Director, and Susie Monzel. Do you want to come up? And if you both want to be there, that's fine, or if one of you wants to drive and the other wants to sit, that's also fine. Beth, Susan, and Matt Morne, who's Special Projects Manager, working out of our Finance Department right now, have spent countless hours putting together the draft CIP. This is, each year when we undertake this, or every two years as the case is now, it's a significant effort to look at all of the capital needs of the city and all of its asset categories, to think about sequencing of projects, phases of projects, various funding sources, you name it. And in particular, I want to thank this group because Beth has still, I will say, relatively new to the city, has not produced one of our CIPs yet, and therefore, this was a new body of work to sort of understand from the city of Issaquah perspective. And then Susie Monzel and Matt Morne have also not had an experience of putting together a CIP. And all of them did a phenomenal job of aggregating data, asking the right questions, and putting together what I think is a thoughtful proposal for you. So I'll reiterate too, as Beth kicks off, the intent of this presentation tonight is to give you that high-level overview of the entire CIP, so you can see the big picture, we hope. And then at the next work session, we will go into specifics on projects and really do more of the back-and-forth, project-by-project kind of conversation that you might wish to have. So with that, Beth?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. And I actually have put together CIPs, multi-billion-dollar CIPs, King County and the city of Seattle, although this one's a little bit unique because the staff is much smaller, so it is far more hands-on than what I have experienced in the past. But like CIPs everywhere, there is far more needs than there are resources. And so the challenge before all of us is how do we weigh the competing needs with the limited resources and pull all of that together? So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide, as City Administrator Moon said earlier this evening, a high-level overview of the CIP. We have another work session scheduled for June 24th, and it will be at that meeting that we'll have an opportunity to go into more of the details about specific projects that the council's interested in, specific policy areas, specific revenues, if there are questions about those. So just want to set the stage, this is intended to be more the thirty-thousand-foot view level and not the deep dive level. I also want to walk through briefly what we want to cover tonight. We're intending to cover quite a bit of ground tonight and just provide a snapshot of where we're heading. I'm going to provide a quick overview of the CIP in general, and then I'm going to talk about what is making this CIP a little bit different than past CIPs that you have seen. There are some important differences that we want to point out. And then I'm going to turn the presentation over to Susie, who will go through a few of those nuances, and then go through the asset categories, funding strategies, and then I will wrap up with what we believe are some of the policy questions that we would hope you would be thinking about as you are contemplating the CIP over the next month or so, five weeks or so, and then we'll wrap up with next steps. So a quick overview on the CIP, and first and foremost, we want to point out, again, City Administrator Moon spoke about this a little bit earlier also, the CIP is a planning document, it is not a budget document. It is a way for the council to articulate priorities for the city that then guide subsequent work we will be doing this fall, next year, potentially annually, potentially biannually as we prepare budgets to match available resources with the priorities that the council has set forth via the CIP. As you all know, capital projects can be very complex, particularly the larger ones. So prices change, circumstances change, as does budget situations. Sometimes things look better than we expected, sometimes things look a little worse than we expected. And so we will use this as a guiding document to guide discussions as we're having those debates over the budget and as we're looking at what are the resources from year to year. So this is a planning document, it is a guiding document, it is not a final decision. So the CIP process in particular, this is a six-year CIP, taking us from 2020 through 2025. We do outline future costs beyond the 2025 period, although the farther out you get in a CIP, the more speculative it is in that we don't know what the revenue picture is going to look like the farther out we go, and potentially needs change. So this is our best guess at a moment in time, this moment in time. We kicked off the process, the process has been fairly compact and condensed this year. We kicked it off at the beginning of April, and it's culminating with what we're presenting here today. We worked with twenty-two capital managers across five operating departments, and it was very much of a collaborative effort, and want to thank colleagues here for working so closely with us through this process this year. So as I mentioned, a CIP is a process whereby we're setting priorities, competing needs that are competing for limited pots of money. Where we see this playing out the most is general government functions, and when I say general government functions, I'm meaning things like transportation, parks, city facilities, IT. What is not included in this is the utilities, because the utilities have dedicated sources of funding. So these general government functions don't have dedicated sources of funding, and they're all competing for fairly limited pots of money. And examples, the commonly-used revenues to support general government functions are the real estate excise tax, which we will talk about more later in the presentation. General fund revenues, as you all know, the general fund is a limited source of funding and is not necessarily growing fast enough to meet all of our operating needs, let alone growing capital needs. We have mitigation and impact fees, and then to the extent we can identify revenues to pay back, we have the ability to issue debt and bonds. But again, that needs to be tied with our ability to pay back these funds, and they come from the same pots of money that I just mentioned. In addition, our ability to fulfill these general government responsibilities can be offset and augmented with the availability of grants, which is something we actively pursue. So what makes this CIP different from other CIPs that you have seen? What is different about this CIP is we're using this CIP, and this may make your jobs as you're deliberating this a little bit more complicated, but it'll be fun. We're teeing up a number of important policy questions that we're asking you to think about as you're deliberating the CIP. We are not asking you, again, to riff off of something City Administrator Moon said earlier this evening, we're not asking you to make final policy decisions. There will be plenty of opportunities to do that, and many touches to do that. But we need to understand what the council's preferences are in these policy areas, because that dictates and determines what is put forth in the CIP and what might fall off of the CIP. So we're making a series of assumptions in the CIP that we have proposed to you, and recommendations about where the council might want to land with these policy discussions, but that's part of what you will be deliberating on, is what are your preferences? Again, not a final decision, what are your preferences? So what are these key policy considerations? The first of which, and in many respects, the foundation upon which this whole CIP is built, is the Transportation Benefit District package. And we have talked about this several times before. I'm going to go through some quick highlights, but this is an important foundational piece to the CIP. In addition, as you just heard, city facilities, we've presented a couple of assumptions, and depending on where the council prefers to head with regard to stay in place or consolidate, that might dictate how funds are allocated within the CIP. We also need to be contemplating a relocated Fire Station 71 that we will talk about in a little bit more detail. Not so much of a policy question as much, but just something to be aware of is we have funded projects, and the projects that are outlined for 2020 and 2021 are funded, but into the out-years, we have unfunded projects. That mix could change depending on what council decides about these various policy considerations that we've put forward. And then last, and perhaps the more mundane of these, or the more, maybe I shouldn't say mundane, because there can often be lively conversations around this too, but the more common policy discussion through a CIP is which projects to fund. And that, of course, is part of the mix of what we are presenting to you this evening and over the coming weeks. So just want, because it is such a foundational issue to the CIP, just want to take a few minutes to remind you of what is being contemplated from the Transportation Benefit District, and then what the CIP assumes in that regard. As you all know, the city council established the Transportation Benefit District in early 2018, but has yet to exercise any of the revenue options under the Transportation Benefit District. We have been talking about putting to the voters a 0.2, I'm sorry, a 0.2% sales tax increase that would generate a stream of revenues that in support of transportation funding priorities. This becomes an important part of the CIP because we don't have sufficient general fund revenue, general government revenue sources to pay for the transportation priorities that have been articulated by the council, plus other competing priorities, such as the priorities established in the Park Strategic Plan, need for city facilities. The nice thing about the Transportation Benefit District, and what's unique about it, is it is a dedicated revenue specifically for transportation. It is not available for other uses. So the extent to which we can leverage this revenue source to the maximum for transportation priorities frees up resources elsewhere. So that's why this is such an important foundational piece to this year's CIP. As a reminder, you have seen the details on this slide before. The Transportation Benefit District proposal contemplates funding for, I believe it's seven projects, maybe it's nine, anyway. Seven projects listed here, including Southeast 43rd, two Newport Way projects, Central Park Signal, the South Cove Non-Motorized Connection Project, Northwest Gilman Concept Design Development, and then the 12th SR 900 Intersection. We talked on May 13th about the two options. I just want to reiterate that the CIP is assuming TBD option number one, which would put a maximum amount of transportation priorities on the sales tax. It does mean that work on Southeast 43rd, which has been the topic of considerable discussion, it does mean that that project would be completed in 2022, which is one year later than if the council decided to go with option one. But again, the advantage of option one is that it preserves a maximum amount of other general government revenue sources for these other, I'm sorry, non-transportation capital priorities. And again, reiterate, it does not mean that work on Southeast 43rd won't happen. It will happen, it's just it's a question of timing, and under option one, it would be completed in 2022. So touched on this a little bit, but this is another way of looking at it and comparing the differences between option one and option two. The biggest difference is the timing of when work on Southeast 43rd would be completed under option one, it would be completed in 2022. Under option two, it would be completed in 2021. I may have tripped over numbers there. Option one, 2022, option two, 2021. Under option one, it would put a maximum amount of the transportation costs onto the sales tax that we would put before the voters, and preserve a maximum amount of existing debt service capacity for other projects. Under option two, because the project would start earlier, you would need to rely on the existing debt service capacity, and there would be less available. So in terms of the existing debt service capacity, and I'll reintroduce a slide that you've seen below on this, but under option one, we would have about, we would be able to afford about $17.6 million of capital investments outside of the TBD. Under option two, we would only have about $9.4 million. So again, this is another way of comparing and contrasting the two options. Option one puts more on the TBD sales tax, less on existing debt service, leaving more existing debt service capacity available for other capital priorities. So you have seen this slide before. Again, just a reminder of this term, existing debt service capacity. What do we mean by it? As we have talked about in past council meetings, we are paying currently about $2.2 million a year on debt service costs, on existing debt that we have out for other purposes. Starting next year and through 2028, we are going to be retiring that existing debt, which frees up capacity within our budget, budget that we're already spending. So it's kind of a status quo level on debt service. So if we reinvest in debt, what level of investment can we get by keeping our debt service costs level at this $2.2 million? That figure is about $21 million. Under option one, we would be allocating about $3.4 million to transportation projects and have $17.6 million for other capital investments. Under option two, again, because Southeast 43rd would be accelerated before the sales tax would roll in. tax would roll in, we would need more money for the TBD package, leaving less money, $9.4 million, available for other non-transportation capital priorities. So as I mentioned, the CIP this year, or this current proposed CIP, is assuming TBD option one, which is leaving $17.6 million to be invested in other capital priorities. And this is a list of the projects, and not going to go into details on the projects tonight, per se, but just want you to be aware of the projects that we are recommending for funding using this remaining debt service capacity. So what would happen if council decided instead to go with option two? So if that was your direction back to us, staff working with the council and with direction from the council would need to reprioritize other projects that are within the CIP, mainly projects that are funded through REIT and the projects that I listed on the previous slide. And we would need to go through those projects and shift a portion of those projects off of those funding sources in order to be able to afford the accelerated work on Southeast 43rd. This would likely mean that there will be more projects pushed off into the out-years, 2022 and beyond, and more projects that are unfunded. What those projects are, I can't say right now, but that's the trade-off. I see there was a question coming, right? I was reading your mind. What those specific projects are would require some more deliberation from staff. Also frankly, if you all would give us some direction of what you see are the lower priority projects, that would help guide that discussion. But that's the trade-off that we would be looking at. So that is the TBD discussion. I'm going to pause here, and I'm going to turn it over to Susie to walk through the rest of the presentation, and then I will come up at the end and wrap it up.
All right, thank you. Good evening. So this falls, this next section, the next key consideration falls in line with the presentation that you heard just before this one. It is the question of a potential consolidated city hall as opposed to staying in place. For the purposes of this CIP proposal, we identified all revenues required to address ongoing maintenance of current facilities. We also included a project for the construction of a consolidated city hall, though that largely remains unfunded in this proposal. What this proposal does not include is projects associated with expansion and restoration of current facilities, as this is an area where we'd need some further guidance from council before mapping out these other projects. So the third key consideration is more of an introduction of this need for a relocation of Fire Station 71. So council may recall that Station 71 on East Sunset Way may no longer meet the Eastside Fire and Rescue's facility standards, nor its level of service standards. So EFOR recently moved to a new operating model, and that move was partly conditioned on closing a station in Samamish and relocating Station 71. So as such, the EFOR board and staff, and city staff, have been working to identify an appropriate site. City Council, we are working on the direction of where to go with this. We have a scenario in this plan for a new station, a new fire station to be built, along with a temporary station, as has been indicated as a need by EFOR while a new station is being constructed. The fourth key consideration is a funded versus unfunded, and we alluded to this a little bit earlier, but we wanted to reiterate it a little further here, is that we've given special attention in this proposed CIP to balancing revenues and expenditures for 2020 and 2021. So given that the city is set to produce another CIP in 2021, as we produce a CIP every two years, we wanted to give special attention to the projects with anticipated activity in the intervening year, so 2020 and 2021. What this ultimately means is that while this is just a planning document and not a budget, projects, all projects, all project costs identified in 2020 and 2021 have been balanced with a revenue source, or in some cases, several revenue sources. But these are still subject to change as we go through the operating budget processes each year. So this is a representation of each of the asset categories of the amount that is total unfunded across the six years of the CIP. We'll be going into more detail in the next section of this presentation, but we wanted to show that even though we have balanced revenues and expenditures for 2020 and 2021, many projects remain partially or fully unfunded. And we also wanted to flag here that in particular, the general government needs are where most of the imbalance lies. So that would be with municipal facilities, parks and recreation, and trails, along with transportation. So that goes back to that slide earlier, showing the different asset categories that we're pulling on that same pool of general government funds.
Actually, can you go back to this slide just for a second? So I want to understand this a little better. It looks like of $70 million worth of transportation projects, we've essentially identified revenue sources for almost all of them?
Yes. So that would be, assuming the TBD option one, it would be assuming some grants, it would be assuming a few other funding mechanisms that would be subject to change each year. But many of the large transportation projects are also in the future years category, which is not represented in this table. This is just showing those six years.
And by far, the biggest single items under parks and recreation are the biggest amount. Can you talk just a little bit about what that constitutes?
So perhaps, so in the next section of this presentation, we go into the, within each asset category. So if it's all right, if we can, great. So to tee up that conversation around the individual asset categories, we wanted to provide a list of the number of projects active and future year within each asset category. And so we had a few flags here as well. This is mainly to set up that key consideration of the project list itself. So how many projects within each asset category, as you review the individual projects themselves? The flags that we had here is the increase in municipal facility projects since the last CIP is largely due to the need for these critical maintenance pieces in each of the city hall facilities, should city staff stay in place. So as discussed in the previous presentation, the, well, additionally, the municipal facilities list includes a couple of projects related to the construction, as we just noted, of the new fire station. Then, within parks and recreation, there was an influx in those projects, as Council President noted, that this is due, mostly due to the recent Parks Strategic Plan adopted in 2018. So the projects that were identified in the near term in the Parks Strategic Plan were included in this proposed CIP. So going into the actual asset category overviews, these are, there are nine individual asset categories that we have distinguished within this proposed CIP. Capital equipment, municipal facilities, parks and recreation, technology and systems, trails, transportation, and then the three utility asset categories. So we have a series of slides, one for each of these asset categories noted. Starting with capital equipment, this proposed CIP identifies three active projects with no future year projects. The 2020 projected total cost is about $445,000. In each asset category slide here, we identify a sample of projects, just giving a taste of what is in the full project list. And the main funding source for capital equipment projects is utility revenues. Municipal facilities, there are 16 active projects, two future year projects. The 2020 total project cost being about $3.3 million, 2021, about $4.89 million in there. We have provided another sample of projects in that list. And the main funding sources for municipal facilities include the debt bond proceeds, as we heard from the last presentation as well, the real estate excise tax, as well as mitigation and impact fees. The policy consideration we wanted to flag within municipal facilities refers back to that last presentation you heard as well, that this indicating a preference around stay in place versus consolidated city hall is a foundation on which this CIP would be built. So as we mentioned, this CIP fully funds these ongoing maintenance pieces, or these needed maintenance pieces. But if, for example, council indicated a preference for pursuing a consolidated option, then the projects in this municipal facilities section of this proposed CIP could change based on the differing scopes. For example, if the council indicated a preference for stay in place, then perhaps some of the community discussions around a consolidated city hall may have a different timeframe or may have a different priority. So moving on to-
For President?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah. So trying to understand the main funding sources, is there a way that that is summarized at this kind of municipal facilities versus parks versus transportation level? Or do we need to go into each of the projects and then kind of bring that up?
As the, in the proposed CIP, it is not necessarily designated for each asset category as a whole, but that is certainly information that we can put together.
Okay. I think that would be interesting to see the different funding sources for the different types of projects, to understand what the kind of request on, say, REIT 1 versus REIT 2 is for transportation versus parks versus municipal.
Absolutely.
Oh, Councilmember Hunt.
Thanks. So the HVAC capital replacement program, that one, I believe, is over a million for that. Is that right? I'm wondering if that item would change depending on our stay in place or consolidated city hall, because that one seems like a big ticket item.
Yeah. The answer is maybe at this point. I think we need to evaluate. It would depend on timeframes. So if, we will have to look at how much more lifespan we can eke out of the HVAC system. I've had that conversation with our facilities manager, and while we have targeted a particular year in the CIP, we are where we were with city hall across the street, where that's our best guess. It could go tomorrow. So we would want to take a look at all of the projects that are related to city hall facilities. If council indicated a preference to go and have the community conversation about consolidated city hall, then we would want to go back and take a look at what is, what do we absolutely need to plan on doing in the buildings, knowing that we may only be in the buildings four or five years, that timeline we talked about in the previous presentation? How might we want to roll the die or anticipate that the new owner, new tenant of those other facilities might have to take on? So those are still conversations we need to have. But we anticipate there would be some way to maybe push off some costs, provided we had clarity that we were moving toward building a new city hall.
Okay. And that pushing off of the costs, that was built into the assumptions about why we're saving money over the long term with the consolidated city hall, right?
To some degree.
So this assumes that if we went with that option, there would be a change from the CIP.
Yep, to some degree. That's correct.
Why to some degree? What am I missing?
I think it depends on the project. I'd have to go back and look at the consultants' exact projects that they had put into their forecast and how that differs from this, because we have revised cost estimates in CIP, because we formulated the CIP after that last, after the study was done by the consultants. So just kind of truing up those numbers is one thing to contemplate. Plus, the stay in place scenario, as Susie mentioned, would require, over time, renovation and expansion, and we do not have any CIP projects listed for that kind of scope of work.
All right, please proceed.
The next asset category is parks and recreation. We have 20 active projects identified in this proposed CIP, along with 18 future year projects. Total cost in 2020 being about $3.2 million, 2021, about just under $5 million. We've provided, again, a sample of projects that would be included in this asset category. And the main funding sources here would be, again, the debt bond proceeds, real estate excise tax, mitigation and impact fees, as well as identified grants. The policy consideration here, as you heard through the TBD discussion, if council indicates a, depending on the preference indicated on option one or option two, it could change some of the timing pieces, it could change some of the funding mechanisms on some of these projects in regards to the debt bond funding, along with potentially the real estate excise tax funding pieces. The next asset category, technology and systems. There are eight active projects with zero future year projects. 2020 total cost being about $3.3 million, 21, about $4.8 million. We've provided, again, a sample of projects included in this asset category. The main funding mechanism here is what we call the IT fund cost allocation, meaning depending on the total cost of what these projects are, since they are used across all the, well, depending on the project, a number of departments across the city, the cost, the funding mechanism would be spread across those departments as well. The next being trails. There are four active projects in trails with 11 future projects. These begin in, the first trail project identified, I believe, it's in the outer years of that six-year window. I believe it's either 2023 or 2024 as the first trail project, but we've provided those four trail projects here. And the main funding sources are, again, the real estate excise tax, mitigation and impact fees, and as well as identified grants.
Councilmember Hunt.
This one doesn't have a total project cost associated with it, and I wondered why.
Just for 2020 and 2021. So they would begin to set, I believe the first project would be 2023, 2024, for when it would start.
And then generally with the active projects versus the future projects, so the last one, for example, had no future year projects, and I'm wondering if that's a function of the time span of those projects primarily?
So active year referring to within the six years of the CIP and the future years beyond. So those beyond, those future year projects mainly included for planning purposes, considering, and to demonstrate the need or the, in many cases, for the future year projects, a identified desire for the project. Go ahead.
You did great. I will just add that part of the consideration is sometimes sequencing. So you may have a design or concept study in the planned active years, and then have the construction in the future years. Or it is really an art. It's about balancing those revenue sources, available revenue sources. And so once we have tapped those available revenues for the active years, we may also move a project into future years, simply because the funding is not available. So it's prioritization, it's need or criticality. So it's prioritization, it's need or criticality, it's timing on design construction, and it's about availability of funds.
So the next asset category, transportation. 21 active projects identified in this proposed CIP, 31 future year projects. Total cost in 2020 at about 9.6, 9.7 million, 2021 about 13 million. Again, we provided a sample of projects included in this asset category. And the main funding sources, similar to what we've seen in the last few asset categories, debt bond proceeds, real estate excise tax, mitigation and impact fees, and grants, identified grants. So as we've, again, heard earlier in the presentation, a big policy consideration for transportation projects is this indicated preference on option 1 or option 2 of the TBD.
Councilmember Walsh.
I'm trying to understand the 2020 and 2021 total project costs, considering if we're looking at a TBD, does that mean that's the cost to us as a general fund and thus represents the debt payments that we would make? Or is that saying the total project cost that would be funded through different sources?
The latter.
Okay. Thanks.
Along with this transportation, the last slide that we saw, we wanted to also flag that inherent within this CIP is this transportation improvement plan, or the TIP, which is a document required to be filed with the state. So by adopting a CIP, council would simultaneously be adopting the TIP. And as this chart shows, the projects that would be filed under the TIP are the transportation projects as a subset of the overall CIP. The last three asset categories being the utility projects. With water utility, there are 22 active projects, eight future year projects. 2020 total cost about 12.7, 12.8 million, 2021 about 5 million. And again, a sample of projects. And with all three utilities, the main funding source will be utility revenues. So the policy consideration that we have for each of these utilities is a flag that the utility rate study is, there is a new utility rate study currently underway, which will be set to be proposed to council in 2020, and those rates would be effective 2021. And we'll come back to that piece in the revenue overview section of this presentation, which is up next. Similarly with sewer, four active projects, three future year projects. The total cost 2020 about 1.5 million, 2021 about 2.3. Sample projects and the similar funding sources and policy consideration as the previous water utility. And again, with stormwater utility being the third utility, the 13 active projects, one future year project, about 800,000 in 2020, 4.8, 4.9 in 2021, sample projects, utility revenues, and similar policy consideration. So the next item on the agenda is a funding strategy and revenue at a glance overview, which in this section we will be going over how we, the different funding mechanisms, some of which we've already alluded to, and some of which we will go into a little more detail on how we determined the forecasted revenues. So the funding strategy, so the process summary to tee up the rest of this section. When we were considering the factors influencing how revenues are allocated within the CIP, we asked a series of questions. The first being what revenue sources are available to pay for capital costs and what type of capital costs. Some of these funding mechanisms are restrictive in what they can be spent on, and some can only be raised from certain sources, for example. The second question, how much revenue is available on an annual basis and how does that align with capital spending needs? So as we'll see with sources like the real estate excise tax and mitigation, those we forecasted how much we might expect on an annual basis. The third question, how much dedicated revenues, for example, grants, are available for specific projects, and what city matching dollars might be required to leverage those funds? And the fourth question, which funds require carrying balances to save for future projects or to account for natural fluctuation in revenues? So for example, and we'll hit on this potentially a little bit later, that for large dollar projects, high dollar, sometimes transportation, sometimes parks, we may need to carry a larger fund balance forward in order to be able to save them for these large dollar projects down the road. So this slide gives a overview of, just for 2020 and 2021, how much has been allocated out from these revenue, from these funding sources. So without going into too much detail, the, again, to help set the priority of focusing intently on 2020 and 2021. 2022 and beyond, some of these sources have been allocated out. As you may see, for example, with items like the real estate excise tax or with mitigation, it's possible that in future, in the outer year, so 2022 and beyond, we may have allocated more than we are forecasting in revenues. And this is an area that, as we continue iterations of this CIP process, that we would need to reexamine each time. But at least for 20 and 21, we have looked at what we are forecasting for those revenues and made sure that it was within those forecasts. The first of these being the real estate excise tax, or REIT, which is a tax on all sales of real estate. When we collect this total real estate excise tax, it is then split 50/50 to be designated for REIT 1 and 50% for REIT 2. So REIT 1 may be used for any capital purpose identified in a CIP. REIT 2 primarily is used for public works, transportation improvements. So to forecast the REIT revenues, we anticipate receiving over the next six years of this CIP, we looked at historical trends of the amount collected over the last several years, and took a conservative estimate of what we might expect in the coming years. Similarly, with mitigation, we took a similar approach to forecasting these mitigation and impact fees, as we did with REIT, looking at historical trends and making a conservative estimate for what we might expect in the coming years. So there are six mitigation and impact fees identified in the CIP. So mitigation fees are paid by new developments, developers with development agreements. And they are, the mitigation fee rates for new developments are based on the type of land use, residential, retail, office, commercial, et cetera. They are collected to offset city costs required to support in the increased development and the related increase in population. So namely, the six types of mitigation here are street traffic, general government building, police, parks, fire, and bike pedestrian. And these sources are restricted in what types of projects they can be used for. So with, for example, parks mitigation can be used only with capacity building parks So moving up, oop, yeah, a second.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thanks. I noticed in our CIP that we were looking at, the general government building is not collecting revenue at this time, so I wanted to kind of ask about that and whether that's because we didn't have those projects in the CIP and thus we couldn't charge an impact fee, and how we adjust that.
Yes. So with the general government mitigation, we, there had not been many projects in previous CIPs pulling on this revenue source. So the fee was not going to be high. That being said, while the draft CIP submitted to council last week did not identify a revenue source, or a revenue forecast for this general government mitigation, we've identified, through a reconciliation of this, a preliminary reconciliation of the mitigation fund, where each of these types of mitigation revenues live, that there may be a general government revenue that has been collected over the last several years. And so in the new draft that we will be producing soon, we will submit a new table of this mitigation piece that reflects these revenues.
So our table does show 4.9 million as a beginning balance, but it doesn't show forecasted revenue. So I assume that means that we're not charging that as a part of an impact fee, or how does that work?
Yeah, as Susie spoke about, there's two pieces to this. One is you can only collect for eligible projects. So part of our issue is we did not have eligible projects in recent past capital improvement plans. We have collected fees over time for general government when we had projects identified. And we are now going through a lot of fund reconciliation work. And as Susie spoke about, we'll be pulling out this piece so that we can identify what could be put toward projects. And then as we identify projects that are eligible for it in this CIP, we can also begin to forecast ongoing revenue that could be put toward those eligible projects.
Councilmember Hunt.
It's the new city hall and eligible project?
Yes, we would assume so, since it would be, we hope, adding capacity.
Okay. And then also, not on here, but in our packet, is an open space mitigation impact fee. And so, and it doesn't have, it has a fund balance, and then it does not have any revenue coming in, and so I wondered what is going on with that one?
Yes. So that, from our reconciliation, we saw that that appears to be a one-time collection of that piece from one developer agreement with Lakeside Development, that it was part of, it was built into that developer agreement. But open space mitigation is not part of our fee schedule within mitigation and impact fees. So there weren't projects previously necessarily that pulled on that open space mitigation, which would not, which would then lead to, in the next fee study and fee structure, a, in addition of that mitigation fee, to regular developer agreements. Go ahead.
I'm not sure I understood that.
Yeah, yeah. Let me see if I can help. So in Lakeside's development agreement, they had to contribute some funds. And there are a couple purposes that are named in that agreement. For some reason, instead of calling it kind of developer contribution, it was placed in this mitigation fund, which is often where we put earmarked kinds of funds for future capital use. So this fund was labeled as open space mitigation. We don't have, per se, an open space mitigation fee. However, as part, subsequent to Lakeside DA adoption and us receiving those funds, we adopted a park mitigation fee. And open space is an appropriate use, as long as it, again, is capacity oriented, adds to our capacity of open space, meets new growth demands, we can use the park mitigation fund since its inception for those purposes. So there's not ongoing revenue in the open space mitigation fund, but when you look at what's in the parks mitigation fund, you could potentially use those funds for open space.
Okay. And also, some cities do have open space and separate parks, is that right? And so was there a decision to, made to do parks only?
We're not sure that that's the case. We can double check that, but our view is intended to be all things sort of under that parks and recreation umbrella.
The next funding strategy we'll run is debt bond proceeds. We will run through this pretty quickly, mostly since we had a pretty comprehensive overview of the TBD piece earlier in this presentation. But this proposed CIP distinguishes four types, four categories of debt. So the first being existing debt service capacity within the general fund to support general government capital investments. The second being existing debt service capacity within the general fund to support transportation, the TBD transportation investments. The third is the proposed voter-approved sales tax increase to support the TBD transportation investments. And the fourth category is the utility-supported debt. So for example, there are a couple of water utility projects that have identified utility-backed debt, that would be backed by water utilities, for example. The next funding strategy is the actual utility revenue. So for the vast majority, with the exceptions of those water projects that identified utility-backed debt, the remainder rely on utility revenue as their revenue source. So in 2020, the items identified in those lists are supported by a current rates, the current rate structure for water, sewer, and stormwater. But since we are conducting a new utility study that would have rates effective 2021, those projects and those costs in 2020 and beyond would then be built into this new rate structure, to be supported by those new rates. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Beth for the final considerations.
So before we wrap up, want to briefly remind you of the policy questions that we'd like you to keep in mind as you are evaluating the CIP. And then just a brief reminder about next steps before turning it over to all of you for discussion. So Transportation Benefit District came up a lot during this presentation. Again, it is a key foundational question for the structure of the entire CIP. And the policy question here is, does council prefer Transportation Benefit District option 1 or option 2? In terms of city hall facilities, again, somewhat of a foundational question and important setting the stage question of, does council wish the stay in play option or, and then investing in the expansion and maintenance investments that come with that decision? Or does the council wish to consider the possibility of consolidated city hall? Fire Station 71, starting the conversation with you about how the city can support EFRS' transition to a new service delivery model and the level of service standards that it has set for the community. And then the project lists, do you support the projects that we have recommended for funding and the funding mechanisms that we have recommended within the CIP? Or does council wish to rejigger, alter those recommended project lists, funding sources? So those are the policy questions that we would like you to contemplate as you continue your deliberations on the CIP. In terms of next steps, we have another work session scheduled in two weeks on June 24th. In that, at that session, we will do a deeper dive into the projects. Certainly, if council members have questions about projects, strategy, things of that nature, we've heard some questions here tonight. We will be prepared to come back and provide you more in-depth details about those, and department directors will be joining in the fun and be available to answer questions as well. We have a public hearing set for July 1st, and then adoption of the CIP is slated for July 15th. This is a critical date, because then this sets the stage for the operating budget that we will be wrapping up around the same time, getting ready to present to all of you in mid-September. So with that, that concludes our presentation and can turn it back to you for discussion or any additional questions you may have.
Nate, Councilmember Walsh.
Yep. So my first time doing this, trying to get a handle on the different costs that we've associated with each of the different types of revenue sources. So I know I had asked earlier, it would be great at the higher level to understand what the revenue sources are for, say, all of the transportation projects versus all the parks departments. But I'm realizing that I would also like to just see, what are all of the, like, 2020 versus 2021 versus 2022 REIT 1 costs that we're associating, so that I can kind of understand the trade-off? And maybe that's just taking this in an Excel form, and I don't know if that's available easily, but that would be nice to look at.
Yes. That is, that is- Yes. That is, that is a level of detail we can provide and probably a little bit more easier, easy, more easily than you creating your own Excel sheet, hand typing things in. So yes, that is something we could provide.
Councilmember Goodman.
The option one, option two TBD, there's some sort of a hybrid option where, can you go back to the slide?
The one, tell me when I get there. Sorry. Reliving, reliving history here.
The first part. Sorry.
Right here, this one?
No. There's one where there was, yeah.
That one?
No. Well, I guess it doesn't matter. It just kind of shows the two. One where somehow if the, so remind me again, option, one of them starts before the TBD. Is there some way to direct funding of TBD sources if it passes, so that it's sort of a hybrid of a one and two?
The challenge really is the timing of the revenues coming in and the risk that we would undertake if it didn't materialize. So the, if the, if the measure didn't pass. So what we have contemplated in the TBD scenarios that we're presenting here, that we talked about on May 13th, is a November 2020 ballot date, which would mean if it were approved by the voters at that election, the tax would go in place effective April 1st. There's a two-month lag in, when we receive the revenues from the state. So we wouldn't receive the revenues actually till June. So this is assuming we start to collect those revenues in mid-2021. If there were a desire, rather than a hybrid approach, what I would suggest to the council instead is potentially ways of accelerating that vote would be a way to start bringing in the revenues a little bit earlier. But with a hybrid approach, you would be, you would be, chances are you would be floating something like bond anticipation notes on an assumption that it passes. And if it doesn't pass, then it becomes a general fund obligation. So there's some rolling of the dice, but, and some risk with that, in that if, if it doesn't pass, you're back to option, you know, an option two scenario, basically.
Council Deputy President Patisse.
Just to, just to follow up right along those same lines, the, the 200,000 for Southeast 43rd in either 2019 or 2020, what, could you speak to, or could someone just speak to what that entails, that 200,000 in the first year?
Yeah, that's, that would be the start of the bid process. So for example, if council selected option two, and the same applies for option one, but if council selected option two, Sheldon would start the, the bidding process in the fall. And he would start it in the fall because the bid climate is better than during peak construction season. So that's the amount that would be needed to, to start the bidding process. If council selected option two, that would start in 2019. If council selected, selected option one, that would be in, in 2020, again, in anticipation of voter approval in November of 2020.
Okay. And it, and it sounds like from the answer to Councilmember Goodman's question that there's not sort of an interim where the bidding process could start and some smaller amount could happen in 2020. So again, I guess I'm kind of going down this hybrid model, but just to better understand, is there anything that could happen before we jump into this $7 million category?
Yeah. And in addition, or just to underscore what Beth had to say, there's timing considerations in terms of when the vote would happen, when the revenue would be available, and then when we would want to go out to bid. Because if we bid at the wrong time, we could get project costs that are greater than the allocated budget. So that's something that we always consider. Plus, to a lesser degree here, we contemplate when we want to be under construction. When is an appropriate time to start tearing up the road and affecting traffic? And so I think a hybrid scenario is a little difficult, in particular because of timing considerations, but also it likely means we take on more risk.
So related, I wondered if there would be a way to structure the, the package that would go to the voters such that it had projects other than Southeast 43rd, but then said something to the effect of that money, because we had talked about that you could have, if you have additional funding, you don't want to commit to, you don't want to commit to every last cent because it's going to be variable year to year. So I wondered if we could, if we could ask for the 2%, but also allow in future years for some of that funding to go towards the construction of this and put that, that wording in some way in the package as a different, it's, I think a similar question to Councilmember Goodman, but a different mechanism, maybe.
Yeah. I mean, it would be the same, it would be the same risk of, are you willing to do some interim financing to accelerate the project, knowing that if the vote is not successful, you know, you've kind of made the decision for yourself of, you know, that, that takes the, the 8 million off of the table for other, for other projects.
Councilmember Hunt, anything further?
I don't think so.
Other questions?
That's it? That's it.
I just feel like, going, this is fun. City Administrator Moon, is there anything further from the city at this time?
I'll just say that the fun will continue on the 24th. We're happy to entertain any questions that council members have in the interim, or to sit down and talk in detail about some aspect of the CIP if you wish. So please reach out to us. We're happy to spend that time with you. We know it's a ton of information, a lot of twists and turns and if thens in there. So happy to spend the time with you. Our, our goal is to answer project-specific questions in particular on the 24th, and with a focus on 2020 and 21, because that's where you have the most immediate impact on your budget. And as Beth stated, because by July 15th, we do need that information in order to provide instructions to department directors on how to finalize their operating budgets for the next year. So we will answer every question in between. Now on the 24th, all your questions on the 24th. And then our goal at the end of the, the work session on the 24th will be to ascertain if you are ready to hold that public hearing on the 1st. And I believe you may be poised and ready to make a decision on July 15th.
Councilmember Walsh.
So I did a bunch of research over the weekend, looking through other cities' CIPs and our own past CIPs. And I just wanted to thank very much the finance team for the presentation, both the presentation in front of us and the, the way that this is organized. I could tell it was a lot of work, and I very much appreciated going through this version versus previous year's versions. So, thank you.
Thank you for that acknowledgement and kudos.
And I have to say that unfortunately, I will not be here on the 24th. I will be dipping my toes in a hollow up in the mountains in the North Carolina Appalachians. But Council Deputy President Patisse will be chairing that, that meeting for me. So have fun. I'll be thinking of you. Any, with that, any, any last, Councilmember Hunt?
I have, I have a question about the naming of one of them, one of the projects. And it's, I think, important because it's one of the ones that's in the TBD. So currently, it's called Gilman Boulevard Improvements, but that's the design one. So it's not a improvement, per se.
Yes. Thank you for that. We run into this challenge every time we put together the CIP, is do we break out projects with different, similar, but slightly different names and make two separate projects to indicate when one is concept or design and then one is construction? And then other time, and, and we've moved to a model where we're putting all phases within one project name. Although, as you stated, it may be that the only thing that is in either the active years or the future years is just the concept or design sort of phase. So I know that, that can be confusing, if not a tiny bit misleading. So that's something that we, we try to be cognizant of. In the project descriptions, that's where you can often go to, to get that clarity on exactly what is this project about. And we try to spell out when, what phases are included.
Okay. Thanks for that. Yeah, I think I had previously seen it referred to as concept or design because...
Right, right.
Of that difference.
Yep. And sometimes infrequently, we hope, we sometimes try to true up names or make them a little bit more comprehensive to, again, get to that philosophy of having everything from the beginning phase to the end phase under one project name. But we may still have some inconsistencies as we transition to that.
Okay. And then for future, just for a future possible deliberation, I, I have wondered about that one in particular being included in the TBD package because of, of that. The other ones are improvements, they're physical construction projects on the grounds that will make a difference in getting around. And that one stands out to me as different because it is a concept. It's, it's different.
Very good, very good. We will be happy to share a little bit more of our thinking and help council understand what that scope of work would be for that next phase on the 24th.
Okay. Thanks.
Any final comment? With that, I will ask if any members of the audience would like to speak this evening to this topic. I see at least one person. Please come forward. Couple people?
I'm Daphne Gann from Providence Point, and I am, would like to speak briefly about the 43rd Street intersection. And I don't know if all of you know, but during the bond issue, the people in Providence Point worked very hard to help pass the bond issue, which did not pass. You know, I was one of the people who met endlessly and talked and doorbailed. And the people in Providence Point really, really, really want you to fund the intersection light out of your existing funding sources, rather than go and wait for the transportation district. You know, I've worked on, over my long life, probably a half a dozen or so bond issues. I, by worked, I mean I volunteered, I've even taken one to Wall Street. And I'll tell you, I don't want to go through another voting thing, even though I know this is only 50% rather than the 50x% that the bond issue was. But I really plead with you, please, please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wanting to speak? Iris?
Hello again. I just want to echo the comment from earlier. I was on a 12-hour flight this weekend and had a chance to read all 163 pages of the material that was distributed for the SIP. And the finance department, just kudos to the time and energy you put into that, because it made for great pleasure reading on a transcontinental. So just a couple of things that caught my attention. It's always, obviously eye grabbing to see big numbers. And there were two big numbers that caught my attention. One, I actually have to go explore because I don't know the route well enough. I think I've ridden my bike on there. But 45% of the TBD budget for the non-motorized South Cove project just caught my attention. I know I've ridden that trail before, but I don't know why it necessitates 45% of the budget. I'll figure that out. And then Parks, 50% of unfunded, $37 million was just a staggering figure. So I went through and looked at those. And there were a couple of things that caught my attention that I've been curious about in the past, which is, as taxpayers, we support funding the schools and those beautiful fields which are locked up to the public. And there's a multimillion dollar budget request item in Parks to create new fields for the public. Wouldn't it be cool if we could just charge the citizens 25 bucks for a key to be able to go and use the fields that currently exist that we've already paid for? Fire Station 71, I don't know what happens with that land. Do we demolish the building and use it for a new city hall? Or what happens with Fire Station 71 when, I guess it goes away? And then in the tech budget, it looks like we're purchasing physical hardware and software, if I read it correctly, and wondering if we're advancing in a cloud computing era to mold to the times with those expenditures, which were trivial relative to the other cost items. And then as fond as I am of the copious amounts of trails and park systems, we currently have a lot of the items feel like gold standard, which is great because we all want gold standard. But if you look at TL 007 in particular, that was one that caught my attention because I don't understand why we would need to upgrade something that's already pretty well-built. I think the last thing I wanted to mention is in terms of funding mechanisms, you know, we'll probably see new items on the ballot from other parts of the state. And then with the school levy that is being considered, the sales tax that's being considered, and potentially if, if funding mechanism is code for transportation, transportation levy, in the past, you know, I've, I've never not seen a school levy not pass. Everyone always funds those. In recent history, we have not passed transportation levies. So something's going to have to give. And when there are three to four to five additional tax items on the ballot, I, I just hope that that's all taken into consideration because the voters have at least historically shown what they're willing to support and not. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Anyone else wishing to speak? Third call. Last and final, council members, final thoughts? Nope? All right. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.